Mission is your meeting is live.
Well, good morning. Welcome to the November thirteenth meeting, Rhode County Commission. Please stand and join in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What? We have any public comment?
Uh oh.
All right. Good morning, Commissioner Jacob Hanson, Rhode County Counselor. I would ask that we amend the agenda today to add in an executive session during my administrative time at ten fifty. It will only be for ten minutes and it's for attorney-client consultation.
Yeah, I told you it was up. He was up. You said when, Jacob? I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, ten fifty.
If I make a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session at ten fifty during the administrative work session.
They moved in second to add an executive session at ten fifty. Call a favor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
One comments?
I just leave them. I don't know why I did them. Okay. All right. Well, um, after the meeting on Monday, I went and met with my general physician for my yearly checkup. Did not go well. To be honest with you, I wasn't feeling really well on Sunday or Monday. Obviously, it showed. So we're going to be rescheduling and doing that sometime after the beginning of the year. So started off with the blood pressure of one sixty-two over one fourteen and it all went downhill from there. I don't think that's a true result. I do admittedly have high blood pressure, but not usually that high. So um, not sure what the deal was, but we're going to start all over on that and go from there. So uh, Tuesday, I attended the Veterans Day festivities here in Manhattan. Started off with a nice, warm and hearty breakfast, the biscuits and gravy over at the American Legion. I want to give thanks to the Knights of Columbus, the American Legion, and all who volunteered to make the battle success as they do um, every Veterans Day. Um, followed with watching the downtown parade at the viewing stand at the Manhattan City Hall. Um, although the breeze was a little bit chilly, I think we can all say it was pleasant morning for a parade. Um, I've certainly seen worse in my time. Um, a lot worse. Um, had almost, I was tiny, that had almost an hour's worth of sights and sounds there. Uh, different things and you know, usually because of the government shutdown, you know, there's a mixture of military and civilian. The military wasn't there, but it was full of kids this year and it was so fun watching them throw leaves at each other, roll down the hill. Um, asking for every piece of equipment to hang. Um, there's so much life and energy over there. It was, it was really fun to watch. Uh, lastly, the festivities ended with the ceremony at the Peace Memorial Auditorium, uh, which was presented by the Flint Hills Veterans Coalition, as well as the city of Manhattan. MC in the event was Mike Riley, uh, from the VFW Post seven eighty-six. After the posting of the colors, the National Anthem and the invocation, uh, we heard, um, from the poster and essay winners. I believe it was Cole Parker, um, if I read that right, from Manhattan Catholic School, read his out loud and heard from a group of patriotic songs. Speaking of kids, once again, eighty-nine third graders from Marlette Elementary. And I don't know how a teacher and a music teacher can keep eighty-nine third graders together and on rhythm, but she certainly did. So props to her. Uh, featured speaker was Chief Warrant Officer and retired, I should say, Chief Warrant Officer Hector A. Vasquez from the Kansas Army National Guard. Uh, also big thanks to Allison Mu from the Manhattan Chamber, uh, for her singing of the National Anthem and Scott Freyby, who was there on the bugle as well. Uh, Wednesday, there was a groundbreaking ceremony for the upcoming reconstruction of the K-18 I-7B interchange. Clark Creek Road there at exit three oh three. U.S. Senator Jerry Moran and Kansas Department of Transportation Secretary Calvin Reed was on hand for that. Uh, I was unable to make it due to, um, short notice. Um, but did do a telephone interview yesterday with Brandon Peoples that came in, writes against the, from the Rhode County Manhattan side. Uh, since I do have some background on this particular project with my work on the NPO Policy Board. Um, also yesterday, I attended the November meeting of NACO's Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee. Uh, after some opening remarks and introductions from our Chair Angela Connolly, uh, we heard a workforce update from, and I'm going to chop this name up unfortunately. Gail Randuski Simberlaid. If you view it on the agenda there, maybe you can do better on that one than I did. I apologize to her in advance. Uh, who is the Senior Director of Government Relations and Advocacy for NAWB. Um, went through the work that they're working on, trying to do some legislative lobbying, just stuff to do right now, given the current circumstances. Maybe that changes obviously. Um, and then, uh, that followed a legislative update from Capitol Hill with Jared Grigas. Um, he's our legislative assistant right now, uh, for the committee and Associate Legislative Director with NACO. It was kind of interesting because during middle of his legislative update from Capitol Hill, the vote was going along up on Capitol Hill. So he was trying to stretch it out to get the vote in. Didn't quite work out, but as we all know, uh, that did pass. I think it was two hundred and twenty-two to two hundred and six yesterday with bipartisan support. I think it was signed last night by the president. So looks like the forty-three day government shutdown is over. So, uh, good news, uh, I think for everybody there. Um, following that, we did have kind of an open floor discussion. Some questions came up. Legislative conference will be in February in Washington DC as usual. Uh, Wednesday evening, uh, was the November Business After Hours hosted by the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. This was out at AH Farms. I think we're all familiar with that. I didn't get a chance to partake in the employee day, but beautiful evening to be outside, uh, networking, uh, talking with members of the business community and, uh, everything else last night. Um, um, they did a good job out there. Such a family-friendly environment out there. Um, yeah. Uh, and lastly, I wanted to mention that, uh, Manhattan is getting one of its traditional staples back. Pizza shuttle is reopening. Seven, seven, six. Oh, yeah. Same location, same number. Maybe not the same advertisement. They may want to update that just a little bit, but, um, yeah. Um, same culinary experience. We've all grown and learned from them, but, um, yeah. Looking forward to that. Um, thinking about maybe over the weekend, even though it's not good for me and the doctor probably would just say. Get the threefer.
Salads for you, John.
They do have salads. Maybe trade one of the pizzas in for salad and do just maybe pepperoni with the cream cheese because that is such an amazing deal. Right, exactly. Uh, not that I did any of those things at two o'clock in the morning. Just wanted to mention that because you know, usually when things close here, they never reopen and they never get to re-experience it. So. Get a big tree. Maybe we're on our way to a red locket too. That's all I've got this morning.
I don't know if I can follow. Okay. Well, let's see. Um, uh, Monday evening, I went to Town Hall. Um, it was hosted by the Democrats. Um, with the gubernatorial candidate coming up in two years. Yeah, that was interesting. It was a.
Is there one or two?
There's several. Yeah, this one was Senator Carson.
I've met you.
Yeah, he's really good. He answered a lot of good questions. So, um, then Tuesday, uh, I went to, um, the Veterans Day event. I did not go to the breakfast, but I went to the parade and John's covered that very well. Um, I do, did think that Cole Porter, who, uh, won the essay, uh, contest, he did a really good job. And Allison, what a voice she has. My goodness. Anyway, and then I have been going over the RFPs for, uh, the Health Department and the family and who have gotten this building. So that's been, there's I think six, six RFPs. So it's quite a job to go through all those. Uh, we're going to review them this afternoon. Uh, let's see, then, uh, let's see. Yesterday afternoon, I had an appointment with my PT person and that was the last one in the series. So we'll go down mostly now. So uh, then after that, I have belt practice. Um, and, uh, went home and caught up on a couple of stuff. Thanks. That's it.
Now, as I mentioned, Tuesday, Veterans Day Parade and all in certain ways. Um, Wednesday evening, I attended the Comprehensive Plan Public Meeting at Potterfall. Standdeck had a presentation reviewing the plan and there were a total of four members in the public and one of them left halfway through. And there, few of us said there were some good questions and discussion about the things from the few that were there. So see how it goes. There was more staff than public.
For any questions? For a second, I have any motion to approve the mobile device reimbursement form?
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the mobile device reimbursement form.
You got a cell phone on that phone? I did. You got many flip phones? You have to make this work.
I was going to put a spot bag phone.
When you got to plug into the cigarette lighter, there's no longer system carb. I'll go ahead and second that.
And move in second to approve the mobile device reimbursement request. Call a favor. Chair, please sign.
Next, commissioners, uh, any motion to approve, uh, any employee action forms with the FIBUS and very editing Human Resources Department.
Interesting. Yeah.
Okay, Elizabeth Ford, Human Resources Director. So we are asking for you to approve a temporary position uh, to bring Whitney Phoebus back for the HR assistant. Whitney was our HR, I think at that time.
Basically Michelle, wasn't it?
Well, the job's changed, but I think it might have been called assistant then. But yeah, basically Michelle's position and then she moved, she worked for Barry over in the Attorney's Office and then went to Pot County for an HR director role. She has recently resigned and she's in transition and we can't find, uh, a candidate to fill the HR position role. So while the meantime, we're just going to, uh, if you're approved, take advantage of her knowledge. She knows Palosody. She knows Riley County. She doesn't know necessarily all of the systems that we've got in place now because she hasn't worked here for five years, but you know, she can basically plug and play and get some of the things done with, um, our backlog of filing, our backlog of creating like our new hire orientations and our folders for, um, interviews and scheduling and recruiting. Um, but this is definitely a temporary fill for her because she wants a full-time job and she'd like to have, she's, you know, higher level responsibilities. Yeah, and I did, uh, you know, she obviously has worked for Rich and she's worked for Barry and I touched base with both of them and just made sure that they were both supportive and.
No, I just, you thought it was interesting that was a temporary part-time thing when.
Yeah.
Just considering. Okay, okay. Thanks. Okay. Um, I guess we still need to make a motion. So I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the Rhode County Employee Action Forms, um, as listed on the agenda.
I would second.
They moved in second to approve the Rhode County Employee Action Form. Call a favor. All three please sign.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I remember right. She's the one that took the picture on my belt. You look great. Oh, yeah. And now you're pressured.
Yeah.
And she was married in the ice.
Is your wife a partner?
Yeah.
I think I was for the joint city county.
Was it? And it's not ours this time, is it? City?
No, yeah.
I'd like to get three new people in. The three new city people, we.
Well, it won't be till change here, but.
I know, but.
Uh, I don't. I, in all honesty, I've actually tried to think of a topic for this meeting in all honesty and I couldn't come up with anything.
Oh, yeah. I talked to Lera McCollough about that and she was hoping that she said, are you going to go? And I said, well, if we can really have a discussion.
There's something going on.
Presentation. Yeah. And she said, what she would like to see is for men, well, we can actually sit and discuss things together. It should be good. So I don't, if we have any.
I don't have just a meeting to sit down and toss things back. And if we have an actual issue or you know, something formal, we'll discuss absolutely, but, um, you know, time is valuable. Afternoon meeting at four o'clock for ourselves, for staff, for both of the county and the city. I mean, it, it, it needs to have some validity. That's just, that's just me.
Getting busy if I'm involved and if they want to talk or if you want to cancel.
If there's a topic.
Most they have a topic.
Yeah. I honestly did try to think of something that was of value and I, I couldn't come up with anything. I would probably say that most sets of staff in Potawatomi County too, for that matter, are probably busy with other things right now.
Well, yeah, they can come up with it.
Commissioner, do you motion to approve payroll account favor?
Um, I would make a motion to approve payroll accounts payable.
Then move in second to approve the payroll accounts payable. Favor.
Aye.
All three please sign.
Go ahead and make a motion that we approve the minutes as written from, uh, the November, uh, the tenth. Yeah, until meeting in the Rhode County Commission.
And move in second to approve the minutes in November tenth meeting. Call a favor.
Aye. Yes. They want to, um, go ahead and put on the calendar that I will not be here on the twenty-fourth. No, excuse me. Um, December first. I got that.
You have mine down.
Yes.
Any other congressional questions? Not having anywhere at nine o'clock.
You know, my, my daughter was so excited to get back in there. And, and, um, I guess her office in D C had required her very show off from some small meetings. People were off doing part-time jobs. But she went to, they said, you can log in and she processes payroll. So I think she goes on, she, you know, her computer was down. Apparently, apparently IT decided during shutdown to re, to put it in the program. So her, it was totally off. But she has to wait for a new computer. That was going to make people real happy.
I was.
While everybody's gone.
I said, well, what were they doing working? And she swallowed me in the contract. Go figure. She was really upset. We can't.
Now, I was home yesterday afternoon after work and was watching the legislative proceedings. And I was like, what? I'm just going to say, what a dog. I'm just sitting to myself thinking, man, I'm kind of glad where I'm at currently. And I was difficult sometimes, but mainly we spent fifteen minutes arguing over a, a voice phone. It's like, it's that bad. Yeah.
Well, you see all that. You're really happy to be here.
Yeah, I, I mean.
We get things.
There's a cer- certain amount of procedure that, that's involved in it, but man, some of that's just. You know, yielding my time to my colleagues, so my colleague can say what I really want to say, but I don't really want to say it, let them say it. She gets the biggest soap opera.
Yeah, they, they soap operas, days of our lives in stuff.
Really?
Yeah.
And my mom used to watch.
That sounds like it's on, on. And, uh, yeah, it's, you know, you can watch it many times.
Yeah. I'm not going to see it. This was in like early eighties.
It's about.
About saving.
So it's all spicy.
Say it's helpful. She could, that's a few of that kids are obsessed.
Oh, yeah. I'll bet you know that.
She has one year.
I'll bet she doesn't feed the span.
Well. My source.
One of the movers was Rhode County's kid.
Oh, really?
Jan knew she had a headache with it.
Well, nearly families. Seeing.
Right, right.
We had toddlers in town, feel like some replace some business or whatever. They say. You can see my. occasion there was balance.
Yeah, that matters. Yeah. A line is a turn, but a line is a time of signing.
Yeah.
Between us, we knew everything.
I say.
Catherine, you know?
Well, how are you all?
You're okay. You're okay.
I know what it is. Both of you, so I'm sorry here. I'm sorry. I, you know, I could see if it was one of them, but it's both of them in the same spot of like, I'm naturally right-handed, but I'm starting to figure out that much. I was laughing with the doctor and I'm like, well, maybe it's, I'm going through manopause and she, she laughed and then I said, I know there's a clinical term for that. And she's like, no, actually that is clinical term. Okay. But I gotta be there on that dust somewhere, right?
I'm not touching that commissioner forward.
I have never any help. You are correct.
I think it's called something else.
She said that technically is the clinical term. And that was, I had the female. Just imagine that.
The maintenance doctor.
I was trying to throw everything at the wall. They know.
You get out of this. I mean, you get to follow things. You get to follow things.
Start Googling.
It's not a bold day. We're not in line that far.
Younger coffee. Yeah. Uh, silk loser or something. I'll bring you some fly crazy and some of the health report to be issued. We're just lucky today that they didn't, or either the Starbucks Union Brise doesn't draw strikes.
There's a Starbucks Union?
I guess so. I heard some reviews. Some. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. It's sent by him. It'll get all this, it'll raise this, it'll stonewall these dangers in these. I'm always going to go low mental stuff. Starbucks isn't like. That's how I heard about it.
Said, oh, you're smart.
It's been a long time since I've had the muck.
Oh, good to know it still works.
Obviously, you are married, David.
All right.
Good. All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Amanda Webb, Planning Director here with Anna and David. Um, Corey is part of this discussion as well. He's just out this week or else he would be standing up here with us. Um, so we are here to basically. Um, so we are here to basically talk about, um, department head evaluations and how you folks want to proceed. Um, as you know, of course, we are in the midst of annual evaluations with all employees right now. Um, so it's of course a topic of discussion. Department has been talking about this last couple of weeks, and I know you folks had a conversation with Elizabeth last week during, um, commission meeting. So we wanted to kind of get some time on the agenda to talk with you about what you'd like to, what we want to see, what you'd like to see, and kind of how we can come together and get some direction on how to move forward with this. So. I think it's no secret, we've all kind of talked about it, how we've been doing our department head evaluations, at least over the last couple of years. You folks have expressed it, we have expressed it. It's not really, it's, it's always good to meet with you folks, especially when we're able to have all three of you, um, you know, meeting with you one-on-one, if you will, three to one, basically. Um, but again, we've all kind of realized it's not, it's not generating the meaning, it's, it's not really uh, being as useful as I think we'd all like it to be. Um, when we, when we talked about this the last few weeks, again, with department heads, the majority of us still want to meet with you if we can be done in a meaningful and useful way. And I think that's a lot of the input we've received from all of you as well. Um, we see, to see the potential value in it. Um, but we believe that how we've been doing it, just kind of repeating what we've been telling you throughout the year, you've already heard it all. Um, it's just not really doing what I think we all would like it to do, basically. And if you feel free to jump in. So, um, a small group of us have, um, chatted a little bit more in depth, um, with Elizabeth. Just kind of, you know, jumping around with different ideas, different thoughts of again, how we can still do this with you folks and make a little bit more meaningful, have that time with you, have that engagement with you. Um, and so we've prepared basically a proposal. On what we could do, um, again, to, to remain engaged with you folks, a little bit more in-depth, a little bit more behind the scenes, as we like to call it. Um, still have that executive session with you, still get direction from you, but be a little bit more interactive, if you will. Um, so essentially what we would like to do is have twice yearly meetings with you. So it would be thirty-minute sessions twice a year. Each of us, of course, would meet with you twice a year. What that would roughly equate to is twice a month for you folks. You'd have two department heads you'd meet with each month in that thirty-minute session. And then for every six months, and then of course, basically repeat. So that would equate to, um, myself and, and all the other departments having two meetings a year with you folks, more in-depth, thirty-minute sessions with you folks. What we would do during those times is kind of bring to you, um, accomplishments, challenges, just, just more in-depth, behind-the-scenes information. You know, that we've been experiencing over the last several months, um, just to give you that information. And then also come to you and talk about our vision and wants and ideas for the future of our departments over the next one, two, three years sort of situation. And kind of what we would need, you know, if, if I'm envisioning, you know, I'm, and I'm just, this is just example, you know, adding a whole nother, um, you know, staff member because I need to do these other things, or we've identified that it's important that I add these particular tasks to my list. Well, that means I need another person, that kind of idea. So, you know, again, what we would see for our department over that timeframe, what you folks would see for our department over that timeframe. You know, anything, any challenges, any kind of, um, you know, things we would need to plan for as we're thinking about this. And basically get that direction from you. What do you think about that? Um, do you have any concerns? Do you have any input? And kind of come together with the direction for our department. Does anyone have anything?
To just to kind of point out one piece of this, that we're not looking to take a lot of extra time when we say two department heads in a month. So we all do our monthly staff updates. And so essentially this would replace, um, the monthly staff update for two department heads. So the month that they have for that month only. Um, and so that way it's really an additional thirty minutes of your time versus two hours, or yeah, two hours of your time. Uh, because essentially we're, we already have fifteen to twenty minutes slated on the agendas regularly to give our monthly updates. Um, and so, yeah, we're not looking to add or take more of your time, but we do think it's valuable to share, um, more in-depth staffing-related things. Um, you know, what do we see as challenges? What are our plans? Um, have those one-on-one conversations, but together with all three of you.
Yeah, I, I think that's right. You know, we, we, we enjoy our, our, our time with you. But our evaluations, we, we talk about things for five or ten minutes and then quite frankly, we all, we all go off the rails a little bit. So if we try to be more focused throughout the year, then, then it helps us because we have things we want to talk to you about. And it allows us that opportunity to take, to have those fifteen minutes or whatever, say, hey, this is what's going on. I, you know, I want to talk about this. I just want to let you know, or this is how we're feeling, or, or, you know, whatever the situation may be. And that, that's, for us, that's valuable. Um, you know, my staff do all the time, come to me, we're no different. You know, this is your staff saying, we want to have this time with you because we see the value in it. Just like our staff see the value and, and come into us and saying, hey, can I close the door? I want to talk about something. So.
I'm just, I, I like this idea that so we had, the way we've been of, for the time, for a couple of weeks. Uh, having the first, especially we had four of them, that last person's not getting the best out of me, I guarantee. But.
It's awesome.
Yeah, it's, it, and trying to evaluate twelve people in a week or two weeks is, is, uh, you know, this, you know, it's not, it's not, it doesn't work. I, I, this sounds like a good arrangement.
Well, um, would you have a, like, structure every year, like, which people or which? But, but what if somebody has a little pressing issue, they want to substitute with somebody else? Is that possible to, I mean, would that be something or?
Uh, uh, that'd be it to you guys, I think. So if they communicate that and they want you to change out.
Well, that for us, something, right? You can put it on the agenda.
Well, I probably, I probably say you want to keep it structured if something happens separately, we need to deal with that separately. But I do think we're having two separate conversations here. While I think this is okay, that's fine. Um, the real question here is, it's a very simple yes or no to basically what's a merit? Um, so that either you get merit and cola, HR gets to keep job security. Sorry, Elizabeth, but it's what it.
You guys getting paid is my.
Um, at, at the end of the year. So that, that, that question does need to be answered as you have to answer that for each one of your employees in your department. So I think that's the question that we're trying to answer here separately than that. Um, you know, in terms of discussing back and forth, that's, that's fine. I, I try to get with each one of you early in the year. Um, certainly willing to have the extra conversation. That's not a problem with me. And if we structure it in a manner where you can meet with us separately, that's perfectly fine. I do think it needs to be structured in a manner that we have that conversation, we are having that dialogue with each department head, which is fine. Um, but I still think that we're trying to ask two different questions here with this, and we just need to make sure that it's defined appropriately.
So you are right. I think that was a really great answer to Catherine's question because we haven't really thought about the emergency thing, but we deal with that exactly as we do now. Um, but I do want to just say two things. Both of them kind of fall under performance, right? It's all the department head performance. So one thing is Jacob and I talked a little bit, um, both in the group and then separately. Um, these are going to be very focused on department head performance so that it is an executive session. Um, I don't want just for you and the public to know, it's not about just overall plans and strategic planning, that things should be public. And so, um, we'll make sure that we kind of find some parameters there that, that are appropriate. Um, and then merit is part of performance. So we're trying to say, you're not getting enough out of the performance conversations. They're not getting the direction out of the performance conversations. So they want to get those more meaningful. And then maybe we just, in my opinion, and the small group talked about this. Um, we just simply have a sit-down with the three of you and HR and legal, maybe, I don't know, that's a peer, so we can talk about that. But, um, and you just say, we go through the list and you say merit, 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 and you make that decision.
It just seems like to me it's, it's a little bit redundant because this will be year number seven for me. So seven of these, and I've never seen a situation where we said, no, sorry, you're not cutting this.
I agree, so.
So to me, it's redundant for me, it's redundant for you, but the issue is, is none of us are public administrators. I, I don't know the director of emergency services and what they do. I'm not a county appraiser and quite frankly, I don't want to be. In terms of, of, of. I, I don't know everything that goes involved in that. So it's hard for me to say, you need to be doing this, you need to be doing this, you need to be doing this. Um, but, and that's why I think having this particular conversation secondarily after that is actually probably not a bad thing. Um, it gives us the opportunity to learn from each other and, and have that interaction. I, um, certainly would value that.
And I, I think if you guys recall back, some of the things that we've discussed that HR has brought to you, we've wanted to have heads up on, like, services that are coming in the future, but they're being asked for, uh, which might require staffing. You know, we are working on those things on a regular basis, months before, sometimes a year before you ever see them. And so that helps you get from them what's coming and also give them feedback of, of which services you think are important, which services we need to go. You know, we talk a lot about AI or IT replacing staffing, that's the conversa, or, or supplementing maybe is a better word, but that's the conversation you can have with them to say, here's where the industry is going, here's where, do you want Riley County to, you know, do you want the director of EMS to be putting this in place or managing staff this way or letting this service go? So. Hopefully it can meet both of your communication needs and then give them, I mean, they need direction from their supervisors.
We're always looking for feedback from you. You know, what do you want to hear from us at our department head, my, my updates? You know, I mean, we, there's a vast difference between department heads and what we're presenting to you. What do you want to hear from us, you know? And, you know, you may say in, in this executive session, you're doing well, but this is what we want to see from you. You know, we want to see.
Personally, David, I don't think anybody wants to hear anything mean. No, you, you're absolutely right. And, you know, because we don't, we don't know what you, from an operations standpoint, not necessarily individually, go through every day. Um, you know, a monthly update kind of goes through the history of things that you're doing the month prior and this and that, but doesn't get into the, uh, everyday aspects of what you're doing. And for us, that's basically what we have to use to judge and evaluate. Quite honestly, and we're not with each and every one of you every day to see that as much as I think we probably actually tried to do that. It's, it's just not possible. So, um, it gives us another kind of layer to be able to, um, to evaluate that and to, um, make that work. But I think at the end of the day, when we actually go through that evaluation process, it needs to be streamlined and simplistic as possible. I, I've got, I've got a negative connotation on that because I've spent my life in the private sector. And quite frankly, I hate evaluations. Because I've been on the other side of them for the majority of my life. So, um, it's going to be hard for me to, to turn the corner on that. And I'm just sorry, but, um, you, you always get the bad, not the good sometimes. And this allows us to see, um, potentially both angles of that.
Um, I, I do have, I have a, um, question with structure, uh, like you'll have, uh, two department heads per month and thirty-minute session. Make sure that each department head, the two, each gets a, a good fifteen minutes each.
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes each.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, so it's a sixty minute.
Yep. We normally have forty minutes a month for, um, their reports, twelve. Some people have thirty, so twenty to thirty minutes. And so this would be sixty minutes a month. Instead of forty minutes a month, you're really adding that twenty minutes in.
Shouldn't to that, okay.
We do it back-to-back or two separate?
Uh, I would suggest two separate days, but it's really here.
Yeah. That's what I want to see.
Yeah, okay.
I did have one question on that.
Sessions at thirty minutes each.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Um, is this just for unelected? Or how do we handle elected?
We do not, do not handle elected.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, you guys.
Now.
On personnel.
Yes. Elected will, I, we haven't actually talked about it. My understanding is elected would continue to come and give you an annual review as they choose. It's up to them whether they want to do that. And so far, they all have done that.
Okay. I know that it was yearly on page, you know.
Yeah.
Right, but instead they didn't want those. Well, that's because we give those twelve times throughout the year. So.
Yeah.
I didn't know if that figured into that equation somewhere.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not evaluating you. Obviously, um, you know, seventy-two thousand people are evaluating you. It's like they do us, but, um, I didn't know how that figured into the equation. So I just wanted to ask.
Um, so John, I was just going to comment on your thought about evaluation. I think that actually everybody is on that same board with you, that they don't want to do in evaluation form. And so we're, what we're talking about is managing performance through just something different, like completely different. And so we won't be doing evaluations for the department heads. You will be doing more regular performance management.
Yeah.
Um, without a form, we'll get rid of it and we'll just, we've got maybe, you know, we've got the ideas of three things that they can bring to you that are related to their job and give your direction. And part of the reason they want to do it every six months is because they bring you things and then they want to see, am I going in the right direction of what, what we talked about? Here's what we've put in place since the last time we've talked. Yeah, I think your evaluation is kind of what we're getting rid of, that, that standard pad evaluation.
One through five or one through tens.
Yeah.
Because every year, basically, I, I feel like a broken record. I'm having the same dialogue with each one of the department heads and, um, you know, when it goes south, that's a whole different, whole different conversation, a whole different discussion. And unfortunately, that can and does happen, but, um, but in terms of everything else is, you know, as I, I think I've talked to each one of you, if you're, if I'm not hearing anything, to me, you're doing fine. Um, and I hear more compliments, quite honestly, than I do anything negative. That's just me, but, um, but outside of that, then I don't know how to evaluate based off of that. So, um, the interaction would be better than just the one time, just trying to figure out the entire year in a process.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that we're all actually on the same page with that cut and sentiment. So, so if you are approving, we'll go ahead and schedule, we'll go ahead and start scheduling those. We won't start scheduling them until January. Um, I would like to schedule a maybe max fifteen-minute executive session to do merit increase. Uh, the reason I'd like to do it in executive session instead of emails is because if we get anything conflicting, you know, I would have to come back to you anyhow. So, um, we'll do that before the end of the year and.
That's starting for this year.
Well, we'll need to do that, yeah, now in December, well, November ideally, if I can get it in. And then, um, that'll be for the twenty-six merits. Uh, the payroll year ends on the nineteenth of December, so we start processing. We, we have all of these kind of decisions due on the fifth of December so that we can start processing them the next week.
Okay.
So I'll try to get that squeezed in for you guys. Um, and this May, I don't want to open a can of worms, but more regular performance conversations are better for everyone. And so this may open some new models for our employees and how the department heads, you know, how this goes with you also.
Thanks. Advised to wear on, on this, um, setup is, uh, when we're going to be in these executive sessions doing some of the performance evaluation as been discussed, um, there's, it's going to be necessary that I probably be in there, but that's for guys' choice because the line of having policy discussions and forms of evaluations might be very thin. So I would advise you guys to be in on that, make sure we're within the bounds of call.
So how does that work for you specifically, when you'd be in the department?
Yeah, well, I guess I didn't make that call for our.
If we're saying something, you know what, here's your.
Well, you know, my government system here.
Okay.
So Commissioners, can I just, um, put another thought in there? And Jacob and I haven't talked about that. I completely see why he would advise that. Um, I also can see the other side of the coin of a peer being in with peer evaluations. And so maybe if we can discuss maybe format limit, uh, I don't know, some way to get us.
We didn't, I mean, this is going back to last year. So we had a previous county councillor, but I don't remember.
No, he.
Being there.
No, he felt very strongly about not being there, but I see.
Right. That's the difference here, and I'm advising differently, is that the nature of this conversation is supposed to be a performance evaluation, but also going to be initially giving overall advice or overall correction about the department itself. So there is a lot of kind of reliability, a lot of risk and crossing over that line. And that's the only reason why I'm saying that. I should probably be involved. That's your guys' call at the end of the day. I can understand why you wouldn't. So I'm not, it, it's just, again, um, trying to keep a.
Can we evaluate that particular question a little bit more?
Yeah.
Maybe come back to us.
Yeah, come back.
An executive session.
Maybe you could have a some kind of instruction.
Yeah, like tied rails.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have both ass and department heads saying you can discuss this, but you can't discuss that, you know. Several of them.
Give us some guardrails that we can't stop. Okay.
I appreciate you guys coming up with ideas because, like you said, we weren't happy with the other format. You weren't happy with it. I'm trying to get something.
It took a lot. Well, I've done this with, I guess, two HR managers. I have nothing against HR. David, I know, David, that's a whole different story, you know. Trying to find the right process and the right time to work together and manage things is what we really need to be doing. And this seems to be heading in that right direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here to present the monthly cash flows for October. Always have to make sure I can see it on that screen too, but so you can see everything. Okay, so in economic development, no revenue brought in in the month of October, but we did spend fifty four thousand, one hundred and thirty three dollars, bringing our unencumbered cash to two hundred and thirty three thousand, one hundred and twenty eight dollars. In November, you'll see the deposit from the state grant for the Make My Move, and then you'll see a large expense out of that as well. And that will be part of the budget amendment.
That's coming tomorrow from the state?
Actually, we got it last week.
Oh.
Yeah, so they gave us fifty percent of the grant upfront to make sure that we meet fifty percent. And then once we do that, they'll extend us the other fifty percent. So we have to have ten households moving. The next is county building. We brought in seven thousand, eleven dollars in revenue and spent twenty five thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars, bringing our unencumbered cash balance to three hundred and eighty five thousand, fifty five dollars. CIP, we brought in three hundred and thirty two thousand, one hundred and thirty six dollars and spent one hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and three dollars, bringing our unencumbered cash to twenty nine million, sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty five dollars. Okay. Half cent sales tax, we're no longer collecting revenue for that, but we did spend seventy six thousand, one hundred and fifty one dollars. Down here, you see this negative projected cash. And I wanted to explain this because we have project estimates now in here for all of the projects that were meant to be paid out of half cent sales tax. Some of those will roll over into the other sales tax. So now that we have those projections, that's why the number looks negative. We will obviously not let this go negative. We'll, you know, split some of the costs, you know, one big one is Marlat, and we don't have them like the, I believe it's twenty five percent that they're supposed to, you know, reimburse us for Marlat. So we don't have that put in here because we're paying all the upfront costs and then they reimburse us. So that's why that's negative. If you had any questions about that. And our other sales tax, we brought in two hundred and sixty nine thousand, three hundred and fifty nine dollars. No expenditures yet, bringing our unencumbered cash balance to seven million, one hundred and twenty nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty three dollars. Any questions on any of those? Um, we have ARPA, so I made sure to put the cover sheet back in for you. And then just a detail of each project. So just a breakdown of all those EMS headquarters, the fire station, um, heats, and then the remodel for EM. Any questions on any of these reports?
Thank you for catching.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good morning, commissioners. Michael Hawthorne, Assistant County Councillor. We have a guest with us today, Chief Judge of the Twenty First Judicial District, Grant Bannister. So we're here today to discuss a agreement we've had with the Office of Judicial Administration to supplement the yearly income of the, one of the magistrate judges for the district, specifically magistrate judge Jeremy Larchick, who solely presides over cases in Riley County. This agreement has been in place for five years. Essentially, the law library supplements the income of the magistrate judge in the, to the tune of about twelve thousand dollars. That funding comes from court record searches at the law library. It's remitted to the OJA and paid to the magistrate judge, basically bolstering their income. So there's no actual impact to Riley County's budget. It's difficult nowadays to obtain and retain qualified magistrate judges. This agreement was initially put in place for the prior magistrate judge in this seat, Judge Keppel, who actually ended up taking a city judge, a municipal judge job before retiring. There may have been some worry that Judge Larchick was going to do the same. The bottom line here is this is just a way to make sure we have a qualified magistrate judge by bolstering their income slightly. And again, there's no impact to Riley County's budget. All this comes from the law library. The, the county is under no obligation to supplement the income of a magistrate judge. It's actually a state-employed position. However, I believe it is helpful for making sure we have a qualified candidate. Kansas permits magistrate judges to not actually be attorneys. However, we are very lucky to have two magistrate judges who are attorneys. As when there are some statutes essentially making it so that when there is not a, when they have a non-law trained magistrate, it can create more work for our district court judges. A magistrate judge is a very valuable role, is kind of a gatekeeper on the front end of many cases and maybe dealing with some, some civil cases, some juvenile cases. And so it's for the board to determine whether to extend this agreement with the OJA for two additional years. And if Chief Judge Bannister would like to share some comments, then I invite him to do so.
Thank you.
I'll try to avoid redundancy, but I'll start with one repetitive comment, which is no impact on Riley County budget or not. None of the funds are coming from taxpayer. But as described by Mr. Hawthorne, the Law Library Fund, which is approved by their two governing law library trustees for this potential extension. The statute is what requires it to go through the county rather than oppose directly from them to the Office of Judicial Administration. So that's why it's before you as the intermediary kind of corroborate Mr. Hawthorne's comments. It so happens that Judge Larchick is retired military, which I think maybe makes the job more amenable to him having some of those benefits in retirement that he has from his prior life. That makes the job less attractive to others that don't have that additional income. But this supplement will help in our retract. Well, hopefully we don't have to do any recruitment. That's kind of the purpose, but retention of Judge Larchick and distinguish from other counties, many other counties. We keep them much busier than the other counties do with our caseload, the assignments. There are another handful of counties that do this supplement from their own county budget. That's not what we're asking. But those tend to be probably comparable to Riley County in some circumstances. Lyons County, Leavenworth, Douglas. Then there's larger counties, Johnson County and Shawnee, that may not be quite here counties, but also do the supplement. So anyway, your support on this matter, as well as others of the judiciary system, remain grateful and appreciative of that, but be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
This comes from that law, law library fund. What, what else is that, you know, what's that fund for, I guess?
Sure. The initial five years did not entirely come from that fund. It came from two different sources, again, non-taxpayer money. But this additional two years would exclusively come from the law library. It's a statutory assessment, and so until the statute changed, if it ever is, it's required to be collected. There's two sources. One, attorneys pay an annual fee that goes into that fund. And then secondly, every time a case is filed, the filing fee, it's constituted of a number of different components, but one very small fractional percentage of that filing fee goes to the law library. When we still had a hardbound law library, it supported all those subscriptions. For a while, there was a part-time staff person. When we needed more space in the law library, for a while that moved to a different location on points, funded rent and assisted with that. Now, for the most part, other than to Westlaw Online Legal Research Terminals, we provide through the public library. These funds tend to accumulate. I don't have the authority to spend them. It's only the law library trustees. So absent their motion passing it to use for this sources, it wouldn't be before you. But the fund continues to go up rather than decrease because I don't have any control over the assessment. That's legislature's responsibility. The law library has been generous also in that I wouldn't say it's their responsibility or obligation that they provided for, for purchase of certain technological items in the courtrooms in the past, sound application, software programs. But it's not that we don't have needs or other ways that I would like to spend them if I were completely in control of them. But they really get outside the scope of the intended purpose of law library. But with the statutory amendment, this has been recognized as facilitating, enhancing the functions of the court. And legislatures approved it for these types of purposes as a lengthy answer to your inquiry.
Well, like I said, I just wonder what, what it would use for.
Sure.
Like goes back to when you had to have a room full of books.
Right.
Instead of just online.
It's really its origins, and you're right on the mark.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we're in a pretty good spot here, and I think we should certainly continue with that, you know. I'll go ahead and make a motion to allow the board to authorize the chairman to sign the amendment as listed.
I'm in second now.
I'm moving second to approve the amendment. Memorandum bringing it for the payment processing district manager magistrate on favor.
Chair, please sign.
Good morning again, commissioners. Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here to discuss a general fund transfer to the RCPD fund. So I did include some background on here, and you know, we always talk about, we wish we had this crystal wall, you know, a year and a half in advance. And we never really know what the next year is going to entail until we get here. So you know, last year in twenty twenty four, when we were preparing the twenty twenty five budget, we were still working through the contract amendments with ACH. We were still trying to figure out how many nursing hours we needed. We're looking at replacing where we get pharmaceuticals from and just different ways that we could, you know, really kind of balance that out. And so we did not anticipate some of these other costs that we originally set in the twenty twenty five budget. One, obviously being the contract price because we had one nurse for forty hours a week. And then anytime we would go over that, we had to pay, I mean, additional costs and then her overtime as well and benefits. So now we do have fifty six hours per week. We have, you guys see it every month, an increase in the daily population. We are now paying for them to be in other facilities because we cannot maintain keeping them here. And that was a new cost for us to take on. That was something that RCPD approached us about, I believe it was last December, saying, hey, it wasn't in our budget. And, you know, Rich said, well, it wasn't in ours either. So, you know, and they were like, well, it's a facility issue, so we, we think it would be something that you guys would need to pay. So we had a lot of discussions about that. And you guys know inmate medical costs are going up significantly. So that is something that we see go up every month, even with the Medicaid rate savings, we're still seeing a huge impact. Another thing that kind of came out of the blue this year was back in July, I received an email from RCPD. And they said, hey, we had these radio funds sitting with you in twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen. We were doing drawdowns on them. We still have seventy six thousand dollars according to our records. We would like to draw down the rest of that money. That was not included in the budget. Took quite a few days to do research and figure out what that even was. And so that was another huge impact to the budget that we did not anticipate at all. John, do you have any?
Well, I'm on that one. If there was a balance there, that balance should be there, and that should be less than what you're.
Yeah, so I, I don't know what happened because I was not here. And so looking at, you know, past budgets, it looks like that money was spent down in other resources. And so it wasn't tracked very well and wasn't continued to be budgeted for as something as a reserve. It wasn't put in their separate reserve fund that we have with RCPD. And so considering this is money that they put with us and reserving it here, I mean, we were obligated to pay it back. It is their, it was their money.
And they're using it for what?
They were using it for radios. They did some sort of radio project back in twenty seventeen, and they just reserved, put all the money in reserves here and then just did drawdowns. I mean, we handle all their other financials. And so I know you've talked to, heard Shiloh talk about that they deposit all their money with Shiloh, and we have separate funds for that, and then they do the drawdowns. And so this was very similar. But this was just for a designated project.
They've also been paying for radios, if I'm not mistaken, out of their unused personnel fund. So to me, this is stupid to.
So.
My, my, my issue here is this, we're talking three hundred thousand dollars. Your budget goes up five, six, seven percent every year. It's on both city and the county.
I agree.
We ask our people every year to draw down on their budgets to compensate for this. If it's statutorily required, I, I understand the movement of inmates to other locations because of ADP and a few other things. It's not RCPD's fault. That's just the nature of everything that's going on. We're statutorily required. But some of these little things right here. Um, no.
Well, seventy six thousand always is a little thing. So.
Yeah.
Um, the radio, they use radio money for funds were supposed to be for radios, and they used it for, for patient services.
I, I could not tell you precisely what this money was used for prior to me getting.
That's. Accountability for that.
I mean.
Why we're spending it.
Yeah.
Spend it if it's not for medical services, and that's what we need to know.
I don't, I don't want to place the blame on. Uh, I don't, I don't want to place the blame on RCPD because I don't believe that it was an RCPD issue. I think it was a lack of tracking potentially in the finance office position.
It was just.
This, this.
They gave us that money to hold and then it's gone, but they didn't take it. We just used it somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
Where did we use it? Do you know?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah.
But they're only due for RCPD expenses, which is seven ones. Now that it was issued for RCPD, it wouldn't have used for it anyways.
Right, correct. Yeah, so it was used. Yes, it was still used for RCPD stuff, but I think during that time, and maybe Rich can speak to this more, there's been a lot of transition in the budget and finance officer position. So by the time this got to me this year, I had to do a lot of digging, had to pick Rich's brain, pick Shiloh's and like, I have no idea what Jennifer is talking about. Um, and so Jennifer had to do more digging and you know, we were able to find like, okay, here's when they reserved it. I believe they even brought it to the commissioners to request to reserve the funds here. And so then it was just finding the right documents and tracking sheets to see where that was. And then when the tracking stopped happening.
The bottom line is was RCPD expenditures.
Yes.
May not be radiance, but it was RCPD expenditure.
Yes.
Because it's all on a separate fund.
Yes.
Yeah, but some of those belong to the city now.
No, they don't.
Oh.
No, not these ones.
Um, expenses.
It was RCPD expenses. So I don't know how they, I don't know if it was grant money or how, I, I don't know that much background about it and I'm sorry, I, I don't have that for you, but that.
In our, in our RCPD fund, we do not have a city fund.
Correct.
Fund. So it's all RCPD funds that Riley County should have established. So it was a city, we said in clear by that. We are not responsible for cities.
Well, I understand that we're paying for something that's not a patient or medical expense.
But we're also responsible for facilities too, so um, part of that could be for that. So basically what you're saying is, is we do owe them the seventy six and whatever changed for sure. And so what about the other two hundred and twenty five?
So everything else is just due to all of these costs. I mean, we have had a huge increase in, I mean, the annual costs were over our, you know, thirty one thousand dollar pool. We've been over that for quite a while. We've got pharmaceuticals and now we're paying for offsite um, housing. And so it's just adding up. And we had a low beginning cash balance to start twenty twenty five because at the end of twenty twenty four, when these costs, I mean, you guys saw it last year too. We had a lot of costs go up last year as well. And so we actually ended up paying some of the expenditures for RCPD out of county general in December last year because we had already done the budget amendment, so it was too late to do and, you know, add it in. And we would have had a cash violation on the RCPD fund because of that expenditure that we had.
We know budgeted offsite.
Right, yeah.
RCPD always paid for that and then they brought it to us and that's really a facility issue.
Yeah.
Which we can not, and so that's why we had to start paying that. But now we'll start budgeting.
Yes, and we.
So that this time causes the cost to increase. I, I tell you guys each month.
No, I still be doing to us.
Yeah, and we did budget it in twenty twenty six. So we took into account the increased um, contract, which we know will need to be negotiated again. But we also put a pretty, I mean, I think it was about forty, fifty thousand, maybe even higher um, for offsite housing to make sure that this was a budgeted expense for twenty twenty six.
It may not.
You know. I know both you were in the law board and I'm not this year, so you went through the budgetary process. Is that, is insurance the largest cost outside of personnel for RCPD or, or what is it? It was trending that way, so I, that's why I.
The insurance is going up there.
Okay, it's, it's, it's fine, it's fine. I'm gonna say it on that. I understand that there's a high expectation for safety and we value and respect RCPD, but you know, what's coming out of our general, general that we need to use for county related things too. And this factors into what we need to do for twenty twenty seven's budget, which.
Which is going to be much more difficult.
Yes.
So I, I mean, and to be totally frank.
The deficit already and then add this on top of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and every year we ask our departments to make strategic cuts in their budget and um, I have nothing against RCPD. I, I respect everybody there. I, I feel the same way, but um, the balance needs to be there and it's just not.
Yep, I completely understand. Um, if we do not do this transfer, we will have a negative cash balance in our C P D fund.
Okay, so we're not building like a separate, like, I don't want to say slush fund, but we're not building a separate balance. This is just absolutely to cover what's necessary.
Yes, and I mean, it will give us a little bit of cushion, right? Like where I did, I calculated out and Rich saw my sheet and I'm writing down expenditures for the next this month and next month going through. Um, and it was, it'll give them a little bit of cushion to transfer over into the twenty twenty six year, but we are not putting, you know, an extra hundred fifty thousand dollars over there. That's not needed. That is not what is happening.
Maybe we have an Indian constant. But everything's that we pay for statute required.
Yeah, I, I understand and I don't want to leave.
And that's what I told the last presentation, last meeting is uh, they can under review as commissioners or put in with all these costs going up and everyone wanting Gary Olds passes remain flat.
Hi, Jerry.
Oh, Gary's here.
No, I don't, uh, I, I don't want to leave them. I don't leave RCPD can cover. Maybe that's a bad, bad one there. Sorry, I don't want to leave them strapped, but.
Leave them can cover for us because we're obligated to pay it.
Yeah.
Which is why we had to pay it at general fund last year because we were already exceeding our budget.
I want to go.
Yeah, I know.
No, there's.
They need it.
There's not, we don't like additional research.
Glad you were here to check here.
Do you have any further questions on this?
No further questions.
I know, I'm sorry. I don't always bring good news.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion for transferring three hundred thousand dollars from our general fund to the RCPD fund on Saturday.
I guess I'll say. I guess it's been moved in steps. But they're transferring three hundred thousand from the general fund to the RCPD fund. On favor.
I guess. It is not chamber. Give us some positive news, guys.
All right. Good morning Commissioners. Darren Solden from Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, uh, here to give a economic update. And of course, Christian's going to talk some about military as well. Um, just a couple of things coming up on the calendar, uh, just so you're aware, we will be uh, doing our annual kind of end of the year presentation for the city on uh, Tuesday nights. The city commission agenda, so it'd be some information. Some information shared there. Uh, that's been moved up about a month. Typically, that's been second meeting of December, but bumped it up a month uh, uh, this year and, and their calendar. And then a heads up that coming up on the twenty third of January, which sounds like a long time from now, but it's not, uh, the twenty twenty six growth summit. So that's what used to be the leaders retreat, now the growth summit. So it's been rebranded, but really focusing on on growth related activities and, and things in the, in the region. So that is on the twenty third of January, uh, that'll be at the K State Alumni um, Association uh, building this uh, this coming, coming year. So uh, just uh, uh, another note on the um, on the uh, Home in the Heartland program. So this is a program to make my move that y'all uh, approved funding for. Uh, Allison Muth in the office continues to do work on that. Uh, just wanted to update and I think you're aware of this, but make sure, make sure folks are aware that that um, on the Make My Move website, the Riley County page is live, so that administrative work has been done. That's that's live. I know Allison's had a couple uh, communications with some folks already and I think there's some more work going on behind the scenes with with some of our local entities on, on potentially other um, other things that could play into, into making that uh, that uh, pitch to folks attractive. But yeah, excited about where that's going to go and, and glad we could partner and work together on that and, and uh, be a good way for I think some of our local employers to help recruit folks from outside of the area as well. So I know there's some excitement from them to do that. So I just highlight a couple of things, bit, bit of a, a preview of some of the numbers that'll be shared uh, next week's meeting over at the city, but um, and I've talked about a lot of these projects in, in some um, some way over the course of the last year. But if we look back through twenty twenty five, you know, really four big uh, attraction projects that have been announced, couple of those are, a couple of those are, are, are either operating or under construction right now. Obviously, um, PTMW over on the east side of Manhattan, in Potawatomi County, but would assume that uh, you know, that have a lot of impact on with, with employees and otherwise in Riley County as well, but that's a hundred and forty plus jobs going into that speculative industrial building. Um, solar turbines over in, over in Womigo, you know, I think that was a big get from getting in that Caterpillar facility for the whole region impacts across uh, multiple counties. But uh, the fact that we get them in there and that, that, you know, they're doing uh, work in, in gas powered um, electrical generation. So uh, generators, that, that's a growing business. Uh, obviously everything going on with data centers, just like PTMW's work, where they're making these racks and skids for data centers. Um, being in a growing industry is a good place to be. And so I think that has really transitioned the future trajectory of that facility over there in Womigo, and that's going to be a good thing for the region. And then the two projects going on out by the, out by the airport, um, I know Chris or Ford sees, probably sees it regularly, but the Amazon facility just keeps going up. I took a picture a couple of weeks ago that I've used in a few presentations and I drove by again last week and my picture was out of date. That was.
Got all the walls up.
Yep.
Good majority of the trust is up to where they don't have to keep a brace anymore. They're going to town.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're making some progress out there. So, so that building's going up, anticipate them being operational, um, uh, you know, in the first half of next year. And so uh, I know that there's started to be some outreach. We've had communication with their, with their HR and hiring folks. And so they're, they're getting the word out. They're going to be doing some more outreach. I know they're already doing some, but they're really ramping that up in the community with, with those jobs. And then the Torgeson Electric project out there continues to, to push forward as well. Again, they're going to be acquiring three lots right in the middle of the park. Uh, building about a five uh, million dollar project there, employ up to about twenty five people to support both the manufacturing and prefab of the, of the electrical systems and boxes and all the other supporting um, materials, but then also their, their construction and service that they're doing in Manhattan and Points West. So they do a lot of work with, with uh, K State, K State Athletics, Fort Riley, and then, and a lot of commercial work as well. So excited about those. And again, I've, I mentioned it, but those two projects out there at the airport too, nice thing is no, no property tax abatements. Um, no other economic uh, incentives as far as, as far as dollars, um, simply the sale of the properties and and then moving forward with that investment in those jobs. So that's a good thing.
Can you remind us the number of jobs at each locations of a hundred and fifty and twenty five or fifty?
And I, you know, the, the Amazon ones based off of similar sized facilities in other places, probably fifty plus, um, you know, warehouse jobs, but there's so much seasonality. So that's not really taking into account any of the delivery or the significant ramp up in seasonality. I know in, in Salina, that facility is a little bit bigger than this, um, about a third again, bigger. Uh, they're, they were talking about a hundred permanent employees. Um, so I think we're pretty safe to say in that, in that fifty to a hundred range and then a fair amount of seasonality around, obviously the holidays and other times of year. Yep, so, um, and then yes, uh, twenty five on that, on that Torgeson deal. So and then Amazon, I would say that that'd be about a twelve million dollar, uh, ten, twelve million dollar building. Um, so like I said, then another five on that, on that Torgeson deal, uh, which will be under construction at some point next year. So uh, add that into a, a number of uh, about six or seven additional uh, expansion projects, everything from Manco to Purple Wave added, added some folks out, uh, out at the um, News Farm Bureau building earlier. There's uh, Dible Labs. We worked with them to add some additional lab space. So anyway, a number of others. You add all these up and you're talking about uh, in total about ten projects. Um, over five hundred and forty jobs and over forty six million dollars in, in capital investment. So I mean, from that sense, it back the last year, year to eighteen months, it's been a really um, you know, really good time. That's a, you know, compared to, compared to some past time periods, you know, I'd say that's a very successful year and excited about what's in the pipeline. We're doing, doing a lot of work. We've got some great things going on at K State right now, new biomanufacturing program, some lab space, some new facilities on campus, see some of the construction going on on campus around grain and foods and things like that. Those are all areas that obviously we're well known for in this region. Um, but things that when we're out talking to companies and, and talking to site selectors that, that uh, those, those present opportunities. So we're really trying to leverage and market those right now and excited about what that uh, what that'll bring in the future. So, um, and then on the small business side, just continue to work, uh, Stephanie Pierce, who's been to talk with y'all, but uh, um, continue to work that front. I know she's got a strong pipeline of potential loan applicants uh, going right now and, and to, in total combining the municipal elevate fund and all of the, the five or six different um, um, network Kansas programs, almost two and a half million dollars in loan funds out to small businesses in the last five years. So that number's really ramped up in this last, in this last two years since Stephanie took on that role and, and in eight twenty four has been, has been managing that process, but um, it's great to see that. And I think that's a, the pregnant area where, where um, we just continue to see growth. There's a lot of opportunity for, as they add education programs and other entrepreneurial support, that's to help identify and get people to the point where they need capital. And once they need capital, we've got some tools in place for them to use now, which is a good thing. So any questions on my front before I hand it off to Christian? Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners and Chair. Um, it has been a busy month, but I don't know if you guys heard, shutdown is over. Um, so it's, uh, I was talking to actually Christine, my chair, and I was like, even though there was a shutdown and lack of community engagement, it was still a very busy last uh, six weeks since I've seen you guys. Um, and so uh, we kicked off right after we met with you guys and with the AUSA trip. So thank you again to Commissioner Ford for going out there. It looked a little different. Uh, military was allowed to attend but not engage. And but we were still um, able to hear from the Secretary of Army to talk about um, the way forward, lethality, war defense and uh, move fast. Um, and so, and just being there together uh, with the Flint Hills when we talked to our congressional staffers is always important for that unified messaging.
This year wasn't congressional staffers. We actually got to talk to members.
Yes.
So it was a little different.
Yeah, um, and it was great. Uh, during just the complication, Senator Moran was able to be there and listen to us too. Um, and then fast forward, um, had the great chance to go to the Association of Defense Communities um, with Amanda. I have a little travel complications on the way back, but again, it was just great to uh, be with other uh, fence communities um, to talk about partnerships, the success. Um, I was telling um, our exec committee yesterday, our airport um, is an example of a decent project that gets uh, talked about a month's other defense contracts, a couple of communities. When I found I was from Manhattan, they're like, oh, you're the airport. So apparently we're known as the airport community, um, which is just awesome. But we were able to emphasize our key tours and, and of course, our spousal employment um, and our made for Manhattan. Um, as you guys know, Veterans Week um, had, was here. It was an amazing event. Um, thank you again to Commissioner Ford um, and the county for your guys' amazing efforts with Operation Green Light. Um, the green clock light, um, as the kids say, was chef's kiss. Um, so it was just amazing to, you have to look it up and add that, um, but it was, it was amazing.
Six, seven things.
Six, seven things. So, um, but it was amazing. Uh, the green light, it just added the extra touch um, of points to just uh, illuminate the veterans and everything.
I will also say on that, it's on the NACO's national.
National page. So um, I was able to share that too. So thank you, uh, Commissioner Ford, um, and the county again. Um, this year, one of our biggest changes was um, Sergeant Major Regiment Group um, took over the veterans display. As some of you know, some of our um, people that attend our board is getting a little bit older. Um, and so they had uh, worked with the Manhattan Town Center and took over a suite. Um, and it was just amazing. I talked to Sergeant Major Rick. They had over three hundred visitors um, actually come to the display and in and out. Um, so we are working on some new technology, maybe suggesting a QR code for the visitors to sign in versus a book. Uh, but it was just great. It was also great for downtown Manhattan to partner with us, um, as we did our history walk again. Um, and then of course, the Veterans Day activities in itself with the American Legion and the Knights of Columbus uh, doing our breakfast, the parade. Um, the one thing that was definitely different was with one ID not being able to be there. Um, the Manhattan High School, high school band, which is my alma mater, was able to lead the parade. Um, and so that was pretty amaz- amazing to see them kind of, you know, be able to take the lead and, and honor those veterans. So.
Saying earlier this morning, loo, the military not being there, it was fun to watch the kids this year.
Yes.
They were really having fun.
Um, and that was probably our best um, highlight this year was um, for our ceremony, uh, our uh, And that was probably our best highlight this year was for our ceremony, our Sergeant Major Retired Hector, or not Sergeant Major, Chief War Officer Hector Beckwest was our guest speaker. But the awesome part was we had 200 people at our ceremony. Eighty-nine of them were Marlette's third graders. And so I will take that as a double win. And so it was just super amazing to hear them sing. And it wasn't like traditional patriotic music, it was actually like music that was dedicated to veterans. And so I just want to give a shout out to Stacy Payne, she is their music teacher. But those kids walked in the parade, came and did two songs at the ceremony. And then they went back and their school actually does a Veterans Day ceremony at their school. So again, for third graders to have all of that activity, it's just a gracious thank you. And it shows the great work that Stacy has done for them. So and then just really quick, moving on, our next luncheon will be December 3rd at the Doubletree, 11:30. And then like I said, I'm just excited to get back to Victory Welcome, excited to see my WIC partners. We are table neighbors. So it's been kind of sad not being able to see them for the last couple of weeks at Victory Welcome. So can do that.
Yeah, I'm just going to come up to the podium. Morning Commissioners, you've been through this exercise before, just a different election. 2025 General City School Canvas. So the election staff is here, Susan, we're going to come up to the podium. We did a different setup than we typically have downtown. She'll be going through the Canvas results, making recommendations on the provisional ballots for the board to consider. Once we've completed this process, then staff will go back and then we'll finish tabulating all of the write-in votes and all of the ballots that are allowed to be counted as addition to the unofficial results from election night. Everyone always forgets those are unofficial results. The official results aren't done until it goes through this Board of County Canvassers, which for those that are watching that aren't used to this process, the Board of County Commissioners now becomes the Board of County Canvassers. And so after the presentation by Susan and the recommendation to accept the provisional ballots, if you could make a motion to do so, and then staff will proceed. And we'll get those results out as soon as we can. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
My ruler is downtown in my desk floor. I was hoping you'd do that for me. So we'll figure out something here, we'll we'll revise.
All right, I've got my trusty ruler that I've realized slides down the podium. So hopefully I don't, I don't lose my line.
She's the ruler, but we don't.
I know, I know. I had to bring mine from my office, helps me stay on the right line.
I understand.
Okay, 2025 City School General Election Canvas Report, we're going to start with our advanced in-person votes. We had 2,166 DS300 votes. We had 38 provisionals. Out of those 38, we recommend that 33 be counted as valid, zero as partial, and five is not valid because two were not registered in Riley County and three were not registered in the state of Kansas. In addition to that, we had six federal service ballots, zero hand counts. So the total ballots cast in person were 2,210. We have now going to lean into our advanced mail. We had 505 advanced mail ballots returned as accepted. We had 12 provisional ballots. We recommend that four of those provisional ballots be counted as valid, zero as partial, and eight is not valid because we had four without signatures and four that we received within that three-day grace period that by law has to be postmarked by Election Day and it was not. And that total is 517. We have Blue Valley Methodist Church that had 220 DS300 votes. We had nine provisional ballots cast. We recommend seven be counted as valid, zero as partial, and two is not valid because two were not registered in Riley County. That total is 229. College Avenue Methodist Church had 519 DS300 votes and 15 provisional ballots. We recommend 12 be counted as valid, one is partial, and two is not valid because one was not registered in Riley County and one was not registered in the state of Kansas. Total ballots cast were 534. First Assembly of God had 649 DS300 votes. We had 14 provisionals. Out of those 14, we recommend nine be counted as valid, three is partially valid, and two is not valid because one was not registered in Riley County and one was not registered in the state of Kansas. Total ballots cast were 663. First Christian Church had 154 DS300 votes and one provisional ballot. We recommend that one be counted as valid. Total ballots cast were 155. First Lutheran Church had 330, or yeah, 330 DS300 votes and 12 provisional ballots. We recommend all 12 be counted as valid. Total ballots cast were 342. Grace Baptist Church had 282 DS300 votes and one provisional ballot, and we recommend that one be counted as valid. Total ballots cast were 283. Keith's Community Center had 78 DS300 votes and one provisional ballot. We recommend that one be counted as valid. Total ballots cast were 79. Leonardville Community Building had 95 DS300 votes and three provisional ballots. We recommend all three be counted as valid. Total ballots cast were 98. Manhattan Public Library had 307 DS300 votes and six provisional ballots. We recommend three be counted as valid, zero as partial, and three is not valid because three were not registered in the state of Kansas. Total ballots cast were 313. Manhattan Senior Center had 125 DS300 votes and 11 provisional ballots. We recommend eight be counted as valid, zero as partial, and three is not valid because one was not registered in Riley County and two were not registered in the state of Kansas. Total ballots cast were 136. Ogden Community Center had 199 DS300 votes and five provisional ballots. We recommend four be counted as valid, zero is partial, and one is not valid because they did not have their photo ID. Total ballots cast were 204. Potter Hall had 460 DS300 votes, zero mail ballots, oh, zero mail ballots, obviously, two provisional ballots. And we recommend both of those be counted as valid. There were 462 ballots cast. Randolph VFW had 99 DS300 votes and zero provisionals, so that total remains 99. Riley City Hall had 96 DS300 votes and two provisional ballots. We recommend both of those be counted as valid, totaling 98 ballots cast. Scenic Woods Clubhouse had 172 DS300 votes and four provisional ballots. We recommend two be counted as valid, zero is partial, and two is not valid because one was not registered in Riley County and the other was not registered in the state of Kansas. Total ballots cast were 176. Sedalia had 91 DS300 votes and zero provisionals, so that total remains 91. St. Thomas More Church had 547 DS300 votes and eight provisional ballots. We recommend seven be counted as valid, zero as partial, and one is not valid because they were not registered in Riley County. The total is 555. The Links Clubhouse had 179 DS300 votes. We had six provisional ballots. Out of those six, we recommend five be counted as valid, one is partially valid, and zero is not valid. The total ballots cast were 185. Trinity Presbyterian had 327 DS300 votes and 10 provisional ballots. We recommend all 10 be counted as valid. Total is 337. University Christian Church had 542 DS300 votes and 14 provisionals. We recommend 10 be counted as valid, one is partially valid, and three is not valid because two were not registered in Riley County and one was not registered in the state of Kansas. Total ballots cast were 556. Vineyard Community Center had 308 DS300 votes and seven provisional ballots. We recommend three be counted as valid, zero as partial, and four is not valid because three were not registered in Riley County and one was not registered in the state of Kansas. Total ballots cast were 315. Westview Community Church had 243 DS300 votes, five provisional ballots. We recommend four be counted as valid, zero is partial, and one is not valid because they were not registered in the state of Kansas. Total ballots cast were 248. Zindale Community Church had 66 DS300 votes and they had zero provisionals, so that total remains 66. So Riley County totals were 8,254 DS300 votes, 505 accepted mail ballots, 186 total provisionals. We recommend 104, three be counted as valid, six is partially valid, and 37 is not valid for the previous reasons I shared with you. In addition to that, we had six federal service ballots, zero hand counts, which totals 8,951 for this election.
Any questions Commissioners on those recommended provisional ballots and partially count provisional ballots?
What's about the percentage of turnout then?
Actually, it's without counting the provisionals, it's a little over 23%.
Last time was 21.46, so a little bit higher. I was hoping for even a little bit more higher than that, but
Well, it's just interesting with municipal elections, you know, they made that change in 2017, was it? Yeah. 2017?
Yeah.
To November elections rather than spring elections to try to increase turnout for these.
Yeah.
Yes, and it hasn't really, hasn't really made much of change.
Yeah, same with advanced voting, you know, they did advanced voting to increase participation and
Why, in this election though, maybe it was a little higher. It just for municipal, maybe.
It just increases, it just makes it more advantageous for those of us that are going to vote anyway, more convenient, more flexible is all it's ever done. It's never increased voter participation.
Well, I did want to give a shout out to everybody working on elections. Mainly the Elections Department, but everybody else who gets into that, Public Works, not just we, all the departments that make it, make it run. Feel like a duck on a pond, sometimes you see the duck, but you don't see the feet moving underneath.
Exactly.
You know, we do have just we even public works, but I think that everybody would be surprised countywide, how many county employees opt to participate. And all the clerks office, we have people from the appraiser's office, treasurer's office.
IT.
IT, G I S. So it's a pretty collaborative effort. We very quickly roll with the involvement from the multiple departments.
For municipal election, I actually got a lot of real positive feedback this year, given the climate and stuff and everything. I thought that was rather interesting, so props to all.
No, you're you're absolutely right. It is because of this election staff, but all and the Commissioners' support. I mean, if the Commissioners didn't support us using all of the other staff, and that's why we use that staff. I mean, we really started heavily relying on IT and pushing the Commissioners to let us use the whole entire IT department. Why is when we made that transition to electronic voting to give people the confidence that we have our most technological people helping assist us with that. But then also the reason for all the other staff is we know and work with these people every day, we know we can trust them. And with elections, election integrity is the forefront of everyone's minds. And so that's what helps us be so successful. When we have those relationships and it just works great. What, do you know the total number of Riley County staff that helped? It's a lot, I can tell you.
We have, I mean, to open, we have 26, so 26 staff people. And that to roam on Election Day and process and get everything set up, I would say an additional 20 people. So we're looking at 46 people. Some people have dual roles, but nonetheless, it's still 46 positions we need filled, whether it's by any person or the same person who's willing to help out in multiple different ways.
And that isn't including any of us because we're all in the office there to help troubleshoot if there are problems with any of them or at the polling places. So that's on top of our election staff. That's what makes it so successful in Riley County. So I can get a motion Commissioners to accept the recommended provisionals and partial provisionals to be counted and certify the 2025 City School General Election.
I'll second that.
Move it, move it second to approve the ballot, provision ballots and a partial count provision ballots. Certify the official 2025 General Election Office.
Bring up a valid point though, that's what we're technically doing, we're just
Indirectly, yeah.
Yeah. Where one person pays the fees, they push it on to somebody else and it gets pushed down until the person doesn't have anybody to push down on it.
60% of all houses, what we severe are non-due ground. Mr. Back.
You're not wrong.
Because this is my first time by Sanders, I'm starting to get close.
Yeah. That is not ready for you. That's my version. Yeah, that's good.
You invited.
Yeah, it's Yeah. So you're ready to buy a song for us. Oh, yeah, this, I'm not even sure. And it is for her. We had like, you know, sports, early in the work hours. Very good, yeah, confirmal draft next sentence. And then average roll. Yeah, who knows this horse might get up there. Great.
And then, yeah. You get to use the link, but if you haven't already done it, you can buy one. Like, don't trip.
Well, I don't get it. It's that last one. Fire machine.
And none of that.
Fine. Everything's checked out. Everything checked out.
I didn't realize you just said
No, it's a little something he's in the paper. So pretty thick. All right. Really, it's very Yeah, you can do it.
It'll be a little bit safer. Obviously, you know, it's a little
Yeah. Oh, yeah. His first. But we're not talking this stuff, so. It should be a period again. They're talking especially about students.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
Right, exactly.
These mats have seen better days.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I get new ones.
I think my leg keeps hitting one of these holes here. I'm gonna have to get with you at some point in time on some airline reservations. That's fine. You breathing a little bit of sigh of relief today, you know, I bet. Thanks for hanging in there. Yeah, you deserve it. You deserve that. Maybe tomorrow then. Maybe.
Yeah, I would make a motion to recess the Board of County Commissioners and read through me this board of county health.
I will second that motion.
Been moved and seconded to recess the Board of County Commissioners, convene in for your favor.
Good morning, commissioners. Diane Creek, Health Director. I'm here to present the electronic health record contract. We met. We had a team of IT, namely Cory, and Health Department staff who met and evaluated the seven qualified vendors who submitted proposals to our RFP for a new electronic health record. We chose, we ended up having a meeting and unanimously we chose to go with Patagonia Health. It's a system that provides a comprehensive cloud-based solution that meets the department's clinical billing and reporting needs and aligns with public health program integration requirements. The Patagonia Health EHR includes complete end-to-end functionality, which includes patient registration, electronic charting, billing, reporting, telehealth, patient portal access, immunization registry integration, and secure messaging. The system is web-based. It eliminates the need for local servers or complex maintenance and ensuring compliance with all HIPAA security and privacy standards. Let's see, it, the modules and the features are federally qualified EHR, meaning the meaningful use and clinical quality measures, integration with Kansas Daisy, Cahill, and LabCorp, and Quests, and Immunization Registry Systems. It's got a built-in patient portal, telehealth application, and an e-learning module for staff. There's electronic prescription, facts, and contact list patient experience tools. There's data migration setup and staff training is included with the implementation. As soon as this contract is signed, if you approve the contract, Patagonia will start setting up the modules and everything that we need. Rollout will start for us in January of twenty twenty-six. And then we originally had a very aggressive go-live date of the first part of March, but then in twenty twenty-six, but with everything that's been going on with WIC and everything else, we've pushed that back to probably the first part of April. So we will go live, we're gonna shoot for the first part of April to go live with this. The total cost of the five-year agreement with Patagonia is approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars, which includes implementation, training, and subscription services. The estimated five-year total, including the four percent annual increase, oh, that's a repeat, is two hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. Initial setup, training, and the first month will cost us sixty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars. And then the monthly subscription fee, which will start in month three, will be two thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars a month for a one-year total of eighty-nine thousand and thirty-nine dollars. There's additional add-ons like Health Information Exchange Interface and Bulk Upload Features. We might purchase that later at fixed rates outlined in the agreement. The base monthly subscription fee is two thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars, and it covers up to twenty users and includes all system modules, standard system modules. In addition, if additional users are added, the subscription fee will increase approximately a hundred and twenty dollars per user per month. And additionally, an optional health information, the Health Information Exchange is available for an additional a hundred and ten dollars per month, if we should add that in the future. So a total of thirty user licenses, which includes our clinical staff, administration, our fiscal analyst. It will also include some interns and some MCH staff. It will be about three thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars a month, which is about ninety-four dollars more than the current EHR system that we've got. The new system will offer expanded functionality, enhanced data security, and seamless integration with state reporting and tracking platforms. Funding for the EHR system will be covered through approved CIP funds that were estimated at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Once the initial startup phase is complete, the Riley County Health Department General Fund will sustain the ongoing monthly subscription and maintenance costs and is budgeted annually. So we would recommend approval of the Electronic Health Record Contract with Patagonia Health and authorize Commissioner McKinley to sign the agreement and related contractual documents. Do you have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Electronic Health Records Contract with Patagonia Health Incorporated. authorized the chair to sign the agreement and related contractual documents.
To move it second to approve the agreement with Patagonia Health for electronic for the EHR software, in favor.
Here, please sign.
I'm not kidding when I said related documents. Until the shutdown's over, I'm starting to get invite said Vince back up on Fort Orleans. That's a bad thing.
Okay, so the next thing that I have is our fiscal analyst position is going to become vacant tomorrow on November fourteenth. The Health Department would like to rewrite the job description to align it with its current needs. So we're not gonna fill the position immediately. We'll fill it as soon as we can, but we need to work on the job description. So, but we're gonna have continued billing requirements that we can't cover by any staff people. We have two people that are doing billing, one for MCH, and then we have Tasha, but she just got back from maternity leave, so she needs to get refreshed on the billing part. So what I would like to do is get your approval for a temporary part-time fiscal analyst position for up to ten hours per week until the end of the payroll year, which is December nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. If an extension is needed into the twenty twenty-six payroll year, we'll make that request before the end of December. Because I don't know how, how quick it's gonna be, how easy it's gonna be to fill this position. So at the level that we need. So if approved, the incumbent of this position would continue working in the Health Department up to ten hours per week with the focus on insurance billing, mostly from the clinic. The Health Department, I have already assigned all other duties to other staff. Specifically, I'll be working with supervisors to prepare accounts payable and P-card transactions so that we can send them downtown to Michelle Adams for processing. I'm gonna work with clinic staff to gather the daily deposits to be sent to Brittany for processing. I'll work with Brittany to maintain monthly spreadsheets for KDHE financial reports, which are next due January fifteen. So we've got a little bit of time, but we have to keep the spreadsheets up. The fiscal impact is the position does not qualify for benefits since it's, it's temporary as needed and will accrue up to fifty hours by December nineteenth for a maximum cost of one thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. It's already in the budget, since that position was in the budget. So I would recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the temporary part-time position of fiscal analyst for up to ten hours per week, ending no later than December nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Diane.
Yes.
Is the incumbent willing to go past that day in December if necessary?
If we need, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, and that's not very far away. We need to make this, you know, until you have it.
Okay.
Filled, well, no.
I think in the meantime, we need to do, we need to do, because it's pretty.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We got about a month turnaround, a little over that. I mean, it's not undoable.
But it's gonna be.
Especially if you re-running the position and then it has, you know, forty-five days.
Yeah, no, Diane and I agree that it's gonna be really tough to get it filled by the end. You know, the year ends, it's always, it's one day earlier until it resets, so it's pretty early. But also, we wanna keep pushing ourselves to get the job description correct. It's going to be a budgetary request when we get that job description. I mean.
Yes.
We don't have anything drafted, but that's what we both foresee. And so I guess we thought, like, how do we do this to then keep giving you, you know, that gauge? So if you wanna do it until filled, it's fine. We just kinda wanted to put a deadline in there to say, okay, here's what you can expect from us. Here's what we're trying to do.
But if you need to know, I'm very motivated to get that position refilled. That is, yeah, so the job description. Additions that, ideas that I had, I've sent those to our current fiscal analyst because she, she knows what the job is. And so I've sent those to her to make sure that I'm not missing anything. I've also sent them to one of my supervisors who, who's very familiar with, has the most complicated budget. And so she, and she has the most needs from a fiscal analyst. And so I sent those, that list to her yesterday as well. So as soon as that list is approved by those two, then I will send it down to Elizabeth to get into a job description.
It's gonna take some time, I think it was.
Yeah.
And for your kind of reference point, what I hear her saying and what she's talked to me about is a similar job to a senior fiscal analyst. So there's, the Clerk's Office and Public Works have similar roles that are, it's just, it's not the entry-level fiscal processing. It has a little bit more analytical responsibility. So that's kind of where she's going in the direction we're going, but again, nothing hammered out.
And what complicates it is, you know, we have a lot of grants. We got very, we have complicated funding from the state. And so that kinda complicates it, makes it a little bit different than Public Works. It probably makes it more like community corrections in that respect, but it's just such, it's a big job. It really is a big job.
I think we want to extend.
Which can you write that on the goal sheet and where the notice? Just cross out and write that off so before the sign. Yeah. And obviously, that all comes to you before we do anything action.
I wanna make a motion to approve the temporary part-time position of fiscal analyst for up to ten hours a week until the permanent position is filled.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the temporary part-time position of fiscal analyst for up to ten hours a week ending, or until the full-time position is filled, all favor. For up to ten hours a week ending or until the full-time position is filled, all favor. All in his time.
Kalen Spethwick Supervisor coming to give the last government shutdown and WIC update. So I just wanted to mention that with the bill that passed USDA will be fully funded through the rest of the federal fiscal year. So WIC and SNAP are are safe through the end of September twenty twenty-six. And we were fully funded at eight point two billion dollars. And it also protects the additional fruit and vegetable dollars that we've been able to give to clients for the last few years. Which was. Being threatened by the White House proposal, they were going to cut it back to the lower amounts. So we are very happy with where WIC stands with the government reopening. Also, just wanted to shout out to Vivian. She's been very helpful with keeping Facebook and our website up to date. And we're pushing out information today to reinforce that we're still here, we're open. But if families are eligible, the best thing that they can do for the WIC program is to participate in it. They are not taking the spot from anybody else who is more needy than them. If they are eligible, we want them to come participate and use their benefits. Participating ensures that we can get the funding that we need to operate. Supports our local economy, improves the community health. And then also, just as a side note, we never had to use the Health Department general funds that we had requested back in October. With the state allocations, they've been able to cover us at a hundred percent of what we needed. So just wanted to say thank you to the commission for for this support for the last forty-two days.
Glad you could.
Thank you. Yes. Me too. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I love it. Make a motion every recess is the Board of County Health, every convenus the.
Or second.
Diane, can you hang on a second? To move in second to recess the Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners, all in favor.
Just about seven. Nurtured one.
Yes. Is thank?
Yes. I didn't know whether to change. You're going to do this at the first or the end of year?
Uh, I mean.
Okay, so how long will you go?
I can probably.
Yeah, you can just go a little. That's just.
I got you on all this one. So. Sure.
They're they're all.
I just didn't see. There's a question.
I'm not going to be able to do this. Have the schedule. And I want to get them on the end of the year.
Oh, yeah, sure.
But that would be something they they have. I don't even want to do it, you know.
Better.
Yeah, I think so.
That was.
Yeah.
Actually, John. I saw this. Yeah, we did. We're actually trying to think. You know, it was one of us. I'm keeping my brain on those numbers. Yeah, it could, but it's all already.
So when you look at.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. This is the.
Yeah.
So. So.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, okay. Charge. So there was a stunt they switched to. You know, they did with the events, sorry, who did those updates? So there were the who's like. Be additionally to that. Big was out of thirty-five. Only portion of those are going to apply in that race. I don't know, there's there's no guarantee. None of those ballots. There's a potential to like. There's still, there's still change. Yeah, I wonder if there were five, oh, you got it, twenty twenty. Were you behind her for election day? I swear, that's what I. I was trying to remember. I remember following, I might not know you guys, I just followed on Facebook. They just stretched out like eight. You call it landslide.
I'm just very pleased with that. I'm a move that the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Oakley and Commissioner Ford. Jacob Hansen, County Counselor, Michael Hallford, Assistant County Counselor, Attorneys for the Commission. Recess into executive session pursuant to the attorney-client consultation exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. For the potential legal advice on pending litigation, the open meeting to resume with the commission chamber as.
How much attendance?
At eleven, right, just eleven AM.
I would second that.
Been moved in second, County Commission to recess into executive session for the reasons previously stated. Under the attorney-client consultation exception and Kansas. All in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioners, your meeting is live.
I move the board of county commissioners to not have executive session.
I would second that.
We've moved in second to the board of county commissioners to not have executive session, all in favor?
Aye. I'll move that the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
Second then.
We moved in second that the record reflect action should be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good morning Commissioners, Jacob Hansen, Riley County Counselor. We have our administrative session for the remaining ten minutes. I'd like to really take the time and talk about the legislative luncheon and some of the difficulties that we're having in that one, and namely, we've sent three separate emails out to legislators. We've had one response, one response from a legislator, and then we also have a response from our lobbyist, Dick Carter, who was planning on being there, but only he said he had another obligation over in Norvalin Park, so that would only be partial as well. So, at this juncture, you know, i- is it possible that there are quite a few legislators that just haven't decided to RSVP, that'll decide to show up anyways? That's possible, but we need to know whether or not this is something you guys are interested in continuing to have regardless, so that way we can get catering and everything else wrapped up. So, th- those are the facts, we, like I said, I've sent three emails out, we, I wouldn't say this was like two months in advance, and we've been trying to reach people, just have not had any luck, and I'm not sure why that is, maybe it's the shutdown, you know, I don't know if that affects them or not, and
Several of them are on special working committees right now that are working before session, but I don't know if that plays into it, but if they're going to get one, maybe that's not worth the time.
It's a week from today, so, yeah, that's kind of
Yeah.
And given the nature of things, that's kind of close to Thanksgiving holiday, too.
That's also true.
Yeah.
Maybe, do you have their phone numbers, maybe you could text them and say we need an RPA safety?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a Maybe eventually I'll have some numbers of some of our local delegation, but as of right now, they probably barely know who I am, so, unfortunately not. Susan May? Yeah.
Guess maybe sometimes texts are quickly emails.
Right, I just don't have any of the personal phones.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, I really need a decision on whether or not we're going to go ahead or not.
But you know, we all need lunch, so.
I will say, all the, all of our staff are going to be there, you know, everybody from our
You have to put it off to the side. This is the one that gets to hold that phone. Yeah, it's taken off the window, didn't you?
You know, that order's not been sent in yet.
Doesn't sound like it's worthwhile.
Yeah, may not continue. And I, I'll still work with, of course, our lobbyists and try to, you know, keep, keep an open communication with, with our folks and communicate our ideas, it certainly won't stop here, it'll continue.
Come down over and give us an update, just make sure you send
Yeah. We'll still
What he thinks, what he sees coming up this year.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to him and get, get something scheduled.
We're going to cancel the write-up any legislative luncheon.
Yeah.
Consensus?
All right, very good. Anything else as far as administrative work session goes? Oh, one thing I might mention as well, we've talked about the First Christian Church Civic Use RFP extensively, I have, will have that ready to go and announced on Monday, so just want to let you all know that'll be going out.
It's going to be Monday.
Monday, yep. And with that, do you, any of you have any other questions for me while I'm here?
Just want to make sure you'll send an email to the Department of Luncheon.
Luncheon, yes, we'll make sure.
And reach out to the legislature and make sure they, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'll leave anybody hanging. Of course. Yep.
Next question, we have a video where
Who did respond?
Amy Rose. The sole legislator. Yeah, I've reached out to her. Brave, I could have listened to his son, but I did talk to him about it too, and he had prior obligations. Like I said, he might actually go to see No.
Does the water district get their water on the city? Or they have them? Because this thing, this one's talking about how it affects, it talks about Kansa and Hunters Island, I would have mentioned, they were set separate, where you get the tender.
Yeah, sure.
This is just their standard rate change.
Yeah.
So that's probably a special contract, because that's a large volume there.
Yeah, for her, yeah.
I thought my water bill was high already.
That's something good, better than here. Six to eight percent every year.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Compared to what people used to pay.
Welcome to Manhattan.
Yeah.
Well, there was a huge amount, even from not using water.
Some base charge.
Well, there's water, soups, sanitary sewer and storms, you know, there's so much month where they use anything.
Yep. No doubt.
Yeah.
It's a twenty percent increase. You have any specials in your state, your house? Lucky.
It's paid off, because it was low by six. Definitely checks for all those starts on PDI. Oh, really? I'm going to shine a little bit of that, and, you know, these things are already out, so I'm going to begin for Riley and mention that.
I didn't want to go again.
I don't, no, we can get it to write it down, because we're going to begin, we can pay them a lot.
Slowly.
And we can pay them, they'll get the bills, the same way with my house, I looked on it, it's listed for their new address, that's going to be sent to, which I'm not sure why, it's sometimes hit their new address.
It's based on the needs or file of our business.
Three months. And maybe Which that is my opinion, of course, you know, I'm saying, they've been, they have sort of, it doesn't mean, they end them. You're going to carry me out of this one.
All right, good morning again Commissioners, Amanda Webb, Planning Director, here with our now weekly comprehensive plan updates until we get this thing adopted next month. Just a quick note, I did just say weekly, we won't during the week of Thanksgiving, but all the other weeks we'll, we'll do that. So, I just want to say again, the draft, draft, draft comprehensive plan is available on our website. We talked last time that SandTech was still updating the implementation plan portion of the comprehensive plan, that has been done with the comments we've received so far, so you'll see an updated plan, draft plan on our website, most of the first part of the document's going to look the same, they did update the cover, so now it says twenty forty, and it says our Riley County Together, which is the title you folks had decided on a few weeks back, so it's a Riley County Together Comprehensive Plan twenty forty, so the cover's been updated, and then again, the implementation plan, which is still in draft form, has been attached to the comprehensive plan draft, so it is out there for anybody to take a look at, you know, provide us any of their comments or, you know, thoughts or suggestions in the meantime. So, we did have our Riley County Planning Board work session earlier this week, it was kind of funky timing when I wrote my report, the meetings were still coming up, so I wasn't able to say anything, so we've, we've had the Riley County Planning Board work session this past Monday, that went just fine, got a couple of questions from Planning Board members, and they're still focusing on looking through the plan, reading through the plan, and they know how to get in touch with us if they have any questions or comments or whatnot on it. The Riley County Planning Board will have their public hearing on the item at their next meeting in December, which is December eighth, and so that will be that required public hearing with them. The Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board will have a work session with them next Monday, so that hasn't occurred yet, so I'll be able to talk about the results of that when I come back with you folks next Thursday, but we'll have that same work session, and then they'll hold their public hearing on December first, so we'll have both of those in early December before it comes back to you folks mid-December, December eighteenth is our tentative date to come back to you folks for final approval and adoption, so again, quick turnaround, but, but we're going to do it, we'll, we'll get it done. So, we did have a community workshop, was that last night, the week is blending together, last night, and I'm sure Commissioner McKinley shared a little bit with you folks, unfortunately we didn't get a whole lot of folks turnout, we had about five folks there, we've been trending with about thirty to most of our community meetings over the last couple of years, if you remember, we had a couple of meetings that were a little fewer and a couple that were a little more, but roughly somewhere in the thirty range, so I was hoping for at least that number again, unfortunately, we were far below. I use the same methods as we'd had, as we'd done with the last several meetings of notifying folks of the upcoming opportunity, just talking about a lot, I have that list there with about three hundred and fifty emails I used, we put it out on our website, just unfortunately, we just didn't have a whole lot of, a lot of folks show up, but there were two new faces that, when, when I did know, but two new faces that hadn't been engaged before, so while we had a small group, there was still new people, so I was, I was disappointed but pleased for that, but pleased that we're, you know, we're still getting people, and the people who were there, you know, again, asked good questions, had good, good input. So, that was our last official community workshop, again, we'll have Manhattan, excuse me, Planning Board on Monday, and then the public hearings next month. And then, of course, folks can still email me, call me, come visit, there's still time to get, you know, get comments in, you know, get, you know, input from folks that can be incorporated for the public hearings, and then anything we're hearing there, we can get updated before it comes to you folks, so, again, really, really fast, but, but we're going to get it done. I did want to, and we've talked about it before, but I do think it bears repeating, some of the comments we heard at our meeting last night, we think there's still some confusion about where our plan applies essentially, we can only, of course, plan for unincorporated Riley County, which is, of course, what this plan does, now, you'll see that it identifies as it should, a lot of cooperation, a lot of partnerships with, with Manhattan and the small cities and other agencies, I mean, to explore things together, to, you know, help how we can support, you know, another agency to do something, because of course, what happens in the cities impacts us and vice versa, but we do not have the authority to plan within any of the city limits. And just with some of the comments we had last night, some of the discussion, we feel that there's still probably a little bit of confusion on that, as you all know, the Manhattan Urban Area, they have a comprehensive plan for that area, and I do think they're going to be working on an update here soon, but they do have an already identified comprehensive boundary, they have, you know, areas where they're expecting growth to occur, where they're planning for, again, growth to occur, so many of the more intensive or more dense, like industrial and commercial developments are going to be likely in that urban area, and then again, that's already all been contemplated for, so I, I don't want folks to go away with the thought that we don't, you know, we're not even thinking about it, or we don't care what happens in City Manhattan, of course we do, but our plan can only apply to outside, and what we want to identify is, is again, those partnerships and how we can help support each other, but we can only plan for the unincorporated area, so just wanted to make that mention again, that has been something that's come up as we've done these, this process over the last couple of years, just confusion about where our jurisdiction lies. So, and we've seen that in a lot of the survey comments we've received, you know, they'll talk about, you know, traffic signals in, in the city, or the roads, or this or that, and, you know, it's valid input, but unfortunately, just not what we can do with our plan, so. So, any other questions or comments? So, if you haven't had the chance to take a look at the plan, I'd encourage you to do so, if you have any concerns or thoughts, please let me know, so you can make sure to get all of that incorporated, and again, we'll, we'll keep, keep you updated, of course, as we get this done, and we will get it, we will get it done, and we will get a good quality product for Taylor two Riley County, so. All right, thank you very much.
David was coming over, that's We did have, there hasn't been one person commenting on this.
I've actually had three. But
I don't know, what do you think?
I just thought we should go.
Find it.
Yeah. Well, and everything you discuss is
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They can find it.
Yeah. That's the one good video.
Good morning Commissioners, John Allerman, Public Works. This morning I have with me a change order for the emergency management fire remodel project across the street. It is for a hundred and five thousand nine hundred and one dollars and sixty-nine cents to, and I guess add the concrete in front of, replace the pavement, the approach and the drive entrance in front of the MS station with the new concrete and curb and gutter. Also included in there is we rerouted some curbing on the north side that tied into the Laffine and the drive going east out of here, as you know, the old driveway went cut through, we're going to cut that off. We just rerouted how some of that curb was going to go, and added a couple parking spots to that parking lot over there, that was a small portion of it, also flagpoles. Original design didn't have flagpoles in it, so we added some flag, a couple of flagpoles for for that, so the I don't know what else I need to ask you about or say in there, that's what the, the change order was for, is extra concrete pavement, parking and curb and gutter and the flagpoles for the majority of it.
This at the end of the project.
Yeah. They're working on it now, but
If they're going to do it, then tear it out.
They're working on it now, but if, if they're gonna, gonna do it, then tear it up, yeah.
Yeah, they're ready to do it, they're probably waiting to, for your decision today, whether they tear it up, if.
They need to do it.
It existing now and start pouring that in there, or waiting, or not doing it at all.
I still want a further explanation as to why this was missed.
So.
The change order for, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars is a very large one. Yeah, a couple thousand dollars, I get it, we're not gonna get it perfect, but this is a pretty big one.
It's, it's, it's a big one, of course, the project two is a three million dollars worth of project.
Well, this is a good percentage of that three million dollars, when you break it down too.
And I didn't figure that for you, so I, I'm not arguing with that, it is a big one, I don't like bringing change orders anyway, you know, a long, big one, you know, like this, so.
When it's minimal, I understand that. We can't get construction costs for big.
But so, when we, we're looking into this, the parking wasn't. On it, we were trying to manage the budget, right? And so we didn't put a whole lot of importance into some of these parking areas. As we were going through the beginning, and as we got into the project. Then it was brought up, maybe we should do it now while we have the chance, and it's, and fix up, make it all look nice at one time. That was the big reason for the change. Um, you know, it looks bad, it doesn't look the greatest, but it probably lasts you for a while, but. At the same time, you're getting a new building, new facade, new curb and gutter, and a lot of into it, sidewalk into it. And you got an old. Ugly parking approach to the building, that, and that's kinda why we were, we brought it up to have them look at and give us cost for.
Let me clarify, this isn't something the contractor missed, it wasn't planned, it's changing. You know, it isn't something somebody missed and saying, oh, it was on the plans, and after we went and looked at it, we went, it should have been on the plans, and.
And the reason it wasn't on plans is because we were mindful of the budget. And still, I guess you might follow the budget, but do you do it now or you do it later? I think when Alvin put numbers together, they weren't any better than the contractor doing it now.
Is it like you said, they're already, they're doing some other concrete paving and curb, so it's, it's gonna be a better deal if we tried to do it later.
This is basically for the concrete and the concrete on the contract.
Yes. Who's that?
Ben Coe.
Ben Coe, that's right.
Uh, I broke it down into different aspects of. Um, what the project is, it, the drive itself was about seventy-one, seventy-two thousand dollars to do that. Flagpoles were, was surprised me, were twenty-five thousand. Um, and then the extra curb and gutter on that east end was only like thirty-two hundred. So, I mean. Work anymore is not cheap, materials aren't cheap. So the numbers are what they are, it's a matter of whether we do it now or we try to do it later, which may not be the same prices later. That's just something we need to do, all of there. Get everything done.
You do need to make a motion, right? Yeah, sure, okay. Make a motion to approve the EM fire remodel change order, uh, number one, uh, for a hundred and five thousand nine hundred and one dollars and sixty-nine cents.
One second then.
And move it second to approve change order number one with a EM fire remodel in the amount of one hundred and five thousand nine hundred and one dollars sixty-nine cents. All in favor of this?
I'm.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a set of numbers to look at. I have one more set of numbers.
One more set of numbers, but I want to do business, John. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, low issue, on the road, on the road. Eighteen and a half is the last spread I saw. No idea. Yeah, I think it was what I saw, that's not right, Rob?
Oh, I don't know, I, I was just amazed you came point-blank. All straight ahead, yeah.
You know.
Seventeen or something.
You know, a long time since we've. Um, thrown them out on the road, you know, it's like pretty good, all of it. I think we're due, so I'm gonna say thirty-eight, twenty-one cats.
Great.
I've got forty-two, seventeen.
You're kidding me, you can come up with a number of that. Exactly.
Well, that's a, that's a, he could be the last game, the last game, he'll see the number, I just.
Exactly what I ran down on, go ahead, Ken, I'll think a lot.
Uh, just forty-two and a second.
Forty-four and what?
Thirty-nine.
I mean, the Lord be honored, the, the current space next to this.
I'll go. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, maybe thirty-six, thirty, yes. Thirty-six, thirty? Rob, you wanna give one? Sure, uh, uh, I'll go. Like thirty-five, uh.
Ten. Okay, I'm a revised one, so I can't wait. I'll go, uh, forty-two, twenty-seven. Give us all a question there.
Yeah.
So.
I have a board rec.
Yeah, see that range is the, the word, okay, yeah, there's that one. I, I think they're all, they're all transferred to something. Yeah. Yeah. He has going to, uh, officials. Yeah, well, I didn't get official listed who was all going, but. Oh, and I didn't have the old parking lane that I had not going on. Uh, we're. We're figuring that out at eight fifteen in the morning.
Where is it? Is that church?
It's just.
You're gonna stop by there, yes.
Oh, okay.
You know, that, that parking lot's really good to watch the fire trail.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
I could see that, yeah. So it should be not in, not in this big. If I'm doing the alphabet correctly, we should be hosting that next year, correct? Or am I missing something?
I'm correct.
Okay. Just food for thought, I'm sure that'll come up tomorrow.
Oh, you're just like, all of that?
Yeah, Northeast Camis.
Yeah.
Yes.
So please take notes about what you like and what you don't like. Cause I have this one to the support, and Cindy and I, I think.
I was just gonna say, Cindy and Cindy were the great god, I mean, yeah. Well, I have some thoughts, so get with the alphabet, especially Camis, yeah, but.
Last year's with the NOS age, I mean, I thought they'd been together pretty good, well, then they had, uh, folks from Commerce come down.
Yeah, Assistant, um, um, Commerce Secretary Justin Jefferson. Put out a pretty good presentation about it. Pattern where we've traveled around, visited places like here in Marysville, and had the year in Memorial, we were at the theater.
Nineteen, we went to the.
Oh, yeah.
The certain, my birthday thing, far.
Yeah. That was at Seneca, yeah, that was.
Seneca, which one's which?
The Seneca.
Yeah, that, that's a nice extension building they had.
Yeah, yeah, there's their World War, was it World War One Memorial downtown there?
Oh, yeah.
Fire station, took some of the scenic tour, everybody does it a little bit differently, so.
So.
Okay, I don't have any other business today, so.
Yeah.
And then I'll go, I made a motion that we adjourn the November thirteenth, sorry, middle of November, Thanksgiving's in two weeks.
Holy cow.
Um, yeah, November thirteenth meeting in the Riley County Commission.
One second then.
And move in second to adjourn the November thirteenth meeting in the Riley County Commission, all in favor?